All right, we will call this meeting to order of the Plant Commission regular meeting of 20th September 16. If I could read mobile, this would be bad.
Mr. Butler, here. Brown. Mr. Island, here. Let's go in better. Liz Osmond.
Yes.
Where your spouse. What's that?
Here. Thank you.
This is our pleasure of allegiance. You're welcome to join us if you're able to. Willing, willing anyone.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Just this one commission. It is just.
And next is the approval of the agenda. We have. On your new business, we do have two. The applications and both of them will have a public hearing and then are not more agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they would like to add? For event. Hearing none, I will entertain a moment.
Don't worry.
Mr. Island. All in favor of the motion?
I am.
Please move. Hearing none, now we pass. Approval of minutes of all the sites, if you have opened your packets. Is there any thought in terms of each one? Page two? Page three? Page four? And hearing none, I will give a team for the total of all.
Someone.
Mr. Butler, is it up?
Okay.
And Mr. Island. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is open public comments to those in the audience and on Zoom, and we will get to each. Again, the Plant Commission request, since we expect a three-minute time limit for individual comments in five minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, again, this is not a question and answer. Time, this is the time for you to have opportunity to voice your opinion to the Plant Commission. As a reminder, we do have two public hearings, and during that time, we will have public comments specific to your public hearings. So I will open the meeting now for anybody who would like to speak with the Commission. And ask that you come to the foreman's seat and then address. First off, cool game. Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute your mic. Going once. Going twice.
Very well, then I will close the public comments period. Under new business, we have two applications. One is consideration of rezoning from R2. Riverside residential to R1 residential for approximately 4.323 acres. Within the 3505 dugout road associated with the former Pine Trail Camp at parcel 032004003. The applicant is North Shores, Riverside Drive, L C Scott Boskow. Well, if you've never been involved with these, what we will do from a procedural wise, and last our voting administrator to introduce the project. We will now then send a representative for this particular application to address the Commission. We will then open to hear public comments regarding this application. After that, we will then debate as the mission. So, Mr. Plant.
All right, thank you very much. As mentioned earlier, this is part of the Pine Trail Camp property. The parcel in question is along dugout road. Well, it's part of the area for rezoning is part of a larger parcel known as Pine Trail Camp. The property proposed for zoning fronts dugout road. And it is. A request from the zoning district. It's currently R2 zoning, and the applicant is requesting R1. In the staff report I provided is a comparison to the future land use map designation with the zone designation. The future land use indicates that this area in question for zoning is. Listed as green space preservation. I also wanted to call your attention to all the land that's west of this and north of this. It's also designated as green space preserve. To the east of 135th, the land use designation is rural logentry. And that area matches up with our zone district of R1 residential. Also, south of the subject site, our master plan designation is for medium to high density residential. That's the orange color. A lot of that land is either R1 or R2 that's in that orange color. We went through the review standards in our zoning ordinance in section 92.40 for review of the class. I included some explanations of that, those standards, as well as some comments. The first is to consistency with the request for zoning in our township master plan. As I mentioned, the master plan calls this area green space preserve. The applicant's request would align with the orange, the medium to high density. The difference between the R2, which is existing and proposed, is that the minimum lot area in R2 is 40,000 square feet. And no, we did change that from the 65,000 square feet when we did the zoning. And R1 would be 30,000. So there's a 10,000 square foot difference in the zoning classifications. The text of the master plan describes green state preserve. And it mostly relates to that Dennison property. It doesn't have a lot of description that is related to other parts of the township. The, the principles to consider for the master plan when considering amending a future land use plan. And, you know, future land use is the basis of zoning, so. I wanted to go through those principles. So the first is protection of public health and safety. The plan says to avoid construction where natural hazards are present, where all weather roads are not present, and where land is contaminated. I believe around this property and adjacent, there are all weather roads. And the land is not susceptible to natural hazards. That's quite a, quite a ways back from the river. There are, there is kind of a rich tree canopy there, and I know the last time the applicant talked about. Some of the trees that have been identified as a danger for falling on structures. Conservation of natural resources. So considering non-renewable resources, like unique forested areas. This area is home to large white pines, several of them. It's heavily wooded, it's forested. That area would presumably be removed for home construction as well as areas around it because of. Yeah, we can't mention last time, the insurance requirements. I didn't include in this memo, and I should include it in our site, the site condo request, though, that. We do allow tree removal if there's a public safety concern, but if there's more tree removal that's happened out of site derail. That's far beyond that, then we do have requirements for a tree preservation plan and tree study that needs to be done. And, you know, if this moves forward, that would, that would be required. Environmental protection is another principle preventing, so ways to do that would be. Preventing pollution, destruction of the environment. So. Our take is that if you rezone, it would likely allow one additional lot based on the configuration they provided. And that would be one additional septic system, perhaps more removal of forested area. The next principle is minimizing public service costs, so encouraging new land use where existing infrastructure is in place. Water main has been extended. New lots would utilize municipal water and beyond septic systems. So as mentioned earlier, there'd be one additional septic system. Efficiency and convenience in meeting land use needs, minimizing existing, maximizing existing infrastructure. So on the other hand, one additional lot or smaller lots would be more lots on your water. Your municipal water system, and many people say that that's a benefit because it's more rate payers into a system that's in place. And then ensuring compatibility between land uses, making sure land uses are not nuisances between the two parcels. The land use wouldn't change necessarily, but I do want to mention that the difference, there is a land use difference in R1 and R2, and that would be. The next comment is that R2 allows a marina, R1 doesn't. And R1 allows two-family, R2 doesn't. So the current zoning would not allow a two-family, but the proposed would. So that is a change in land use. The other changes in land use in our ordinance require municipal water and sewers, so that wouldn't apply right now at this site. Item three, that the site is adequately served by public and private streets that impact the rezoning would not impact the delivery of municipal services. And that the site can be reasonably served by outside well and septic. So the site is served by public roads. There is municipal water available. We have not reviewed any soil studies to determine septic suitability. And the lot size area required for septic tanks and replacement areas. So that would be a public, the health department would have to review that and make sure that the septic system would be placed. On this property, on these properties, but the areas predominantly is sandy soil. Number four, there are no natural constraints to the development of land in accordance with the design of zoning district, and the zoning map amendment will not impact sensitive natural resource. So I do mention that it is wooded. Dugout Road is not included as a tree preservation roadway in the township. You are allowed to remove trees if your property is three acres or less and is not subject to site condominium. Now, because we've had these projects, we have the previous one of the existing cabins and the condo conversion. Now we have this proposed site condo. That is part of a much larger parcel. There would be, I believe, this need to do the tree preservation. Study now and. And proceed further with the process to apply for the free, any tree removal moving forward. And with that comes the analysis of the trees that are there and what is proposed for legal. Based on some comments we received and there is some understanding out there by adjacent property owners that more trees have been removed than. We allow in our ordinance. But I don't think that is found. So, as I mentioned, there are some differences in the future land use category out here. There is a difference in the land use between the R1 and R2. The master plan doesn't specifically mention policy guidance for green space preserve, except for the Dennison property. And this is not that. This is the Pine Trail property. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
We need to talk about correspondence or these correspondence that we have on our, any of our, related to these, these one thing.
Yeah, the other ones. Well, we would move, we can move into public comment as well. But we do have some comments. We have a letter from Olson and Howard. They did September 10th, 2025, that's been made available in your packet. Some of the comments in here relate to the previous action at your progress meetings. But there are also comments related to this rezoning request and the subsequent site condominium item on your agenda. We also have a letter from Laura in Dunn Sutter. Who are concerned about the neighborhood. They believe that the plan would increase traffic and change the character of the neighborhood in ways that affect both current residents and future homeowners. They respectfully suggest instead of connecting those parcels through Pine Trail off of 66. Which already runs directly through Pine Trail. That route would provide a more natural extension of the new homes, give those families added privacy with their own entrance, and preserve the character of quiet dugout road and Riverside Drive neighborhood. So I think that they would be, it seems that they're against these parcels right at dugout, want to see them integrated into the property. And then we also received a letter from Nicholas Wallace. I believe some of these individuals are on the Zoom as well. Mr. Wallace brings up some concerns about tree removal that has been occurring on the property. Some white pines over over 100 feet in tall with diameters of two to three feet. So there are concerns about that, that there's been, that there's been cutting of both sugar maples. And some cutting of trees that are, that were on adjacent properties. So I know that they're also online, but that is, that is a concern about the rezoning. Because it would allow for higher density and more debris law and further ripening corridor at risk. So that's what we have on file today for the committee.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioners, any questions? If you can wait, you can delay.
One question. I think that my packet late last week. When did we get the letter from the attorney though?
I just got it today. That attorney, the Olson Howard letter came in. Doesn't state it this time.
It would have been nice, I mean, with the technical nature of that letter. It's hard to inhale that as in.
It's six pages.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
It's, it would have been nice if we would have had it earlier.
Wednesday, came in Wednesday at 4:00 PM. So after we closed, so basically Thursday.
Future, could you at least email them a note when you got them?
Yes.
It was all in the actual.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was on.
Oh, that's not allowed.
Yeah.
All right, so we will move on. Do we have a representative?
Mr. Boskow should be on.
On Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good Mr. Boskow. Great.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, so before you today is a request, or the first request is to simply rezone. Well, I won't say it's simply, to rezone the property of these proposed five lots from an R2 district to an R1 district. And maybe just, maybe a goal or, or maybe just an outline to explain why. We aren't proposing to do a PUD where we're going to have a high density, a bunch of two-family homes. And significant volume or number of residences on this, but we simply are proposing to use your ordinance. Your new ordinance, amended ordinance recently. And use the lot sizes that you've proposed. Now, I say that in word, obviously in an R2 zoning district, which I believe. When you put your R2 zoning on this piece of property, the property was simply one tax parcel. So they zoned the property, both sides of dugout road, R2, because it was one tax parcel, one address. But if you look at your ordinance for R2, R2 is a Riverside district. And most of the elements of it apply to property that actually has waterfrontage. This property or these proposed five lots do not have waterfrontage, and if you look at all of the neighbors. That are in the area, nobody is zoned R2 that doesn't have waterfrontage. So it seems like that would be a natural rezone, or at least to us as the owner. And we're not proposing two-family or. Any kind of saturated home sites there. If you look at the condo docs, they are simply single-family homes, one home per lot. We aren't proposing tonight any tree removal, and quite frankly, we're not proposing building any homes at the moment. We're simply here to rezone the property. And then the next piece would be actually to divide the property into five parcels. That would be allowed under the R1 zoning. Again. This pretty much is from dugout road back to 66th Street, and it covers that section of the past Pine Trail Camp property. And other than the widening of the road and the trees that were taken down by. I think the township or whoever you hired to take the trees down, there has been no trees removed from this section of the property by North Shores. And again, I think Laney hit all of the points. It's obviously got water out front. They would be septic systems that would be, have to be approved by Elegant County. It's sandy soil. I did stake the property. Recently, and so if you did ride out there, you would be able to see actually how big these lots are. But it is staked the way we originally drew it up. And both myself and the engineers that worked for us, everybody missed the part in your new ordinance that corner lots. Like on 66th Street and dugout road, actually require 20 more feet of frontage. So we did amend the drawing, which you don't have in front of you because I think we emailed it a little late to Laney. Carl that's sitting in the audience printed them out and has them with you if you wanted to see them. But we simply just expanded lot number one to be 20 feet wider, shifted all the lots down 20 feet. And then made unit five deeper to make sure that we meet the square foot requirement. So Laney had a great catch, and quite frankly, that's a great element of your ordinance because. It doesn't seem like it's applicable to lots that were created by Wright. And if you want a good example, 100 yards away from this property, there's a new house going up on the corner of 135th and 66th Street. And if anybody's driven by there recently, it looks to me like it's way too close to the road. And so I think that was a good amendment to your ordinance to make corner lots 20 feet wider. And so we did update the drawing, and obviously this is preliminary. Approval, and for the final approval, the lots would be conforming. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The only other, I guess, concern I had is there was a change in your ordinance that I'm sure that you're aware of. That added to the definition of structures as one of the elements was stormwater retention. And. I don't know that that was a good move or a smart move because stormwater retention. Historically, and drains from Elegant County all run on everybody's road right of ways, or they run on the setbacks on the front of the property typically. We proposed them to just use the back of the property. And put them in the right of way so that we, or your setbacks, so that we could move future homes. Because there is kind of an architectural review and part of this condo thing, we would want to keep them as far back off the road of dugout road as possible. And I think it's appropriate to actually have stormwater storage in the back of the property. And so I don't know how to address that or what we would need to do to address that. Otherwise, we simply would have to have stormwater retention. On each individual lot because it wouldn't be able to be commingled between lots because it would be in the side yard setbacks. So that, that one surprised me and I think is a bit of a challenge. Obviously, we can still fit that into these lots because they're large enough. It just doesn't seem like. It's the smartest use of the land, but I do get probably in the big picture while you did it because you've had PUDs in front of you recently and. People put your retention basins and your setbacks, and then they get more homes on the property. And I don't think in this particular case, that's anywhere as close to what we're trying to accomplish here tonight. Again, if anybody had any questions, those are probably what I thought were the highlights, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody had.
Commissioner, does anyone have a question regarding this rezoning? All right, and then we have another opportunity, another time. Okay, I will, at this point, unless I have somebody else.
One, one more thing. There was a email, Laney, I think maybe was missed. There was a property owner right exactly across the street on dugout road that made a comment. I believe it was a guy named Scott Wieringa. And it was an email that I think Laney received back on August eighteen.
That, I, I did not, the only email I got from Scott was related to the condo conversion when I sent that packet. He replied that, I think, paragras, you know, looks like a nice plan. But I don't have anything related to this public hearing item.
Well, I have a copy of it here that's dated August nineteen where he had asked for a copy of the rezoning application for thirty-five oh five dugout road. And you had sent it to him and then he had responded later. And I think that would be days later that said, thank you, looks like a good plan. And that's from Scott Wieringa, the neighbor directly across the street.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I will open the public hearing associated with this particular application. Oh, as before, we leave the podium, state your name, address. You'll have three minutes to speak. So in the middle, five minutes presenting. And once all eight of you was present here, and our audience have to speak, I will move to Zoom and same rules will, will apply and we'll go from there. So therefore, I vote in the public hearing regarding this rezoning request.
Good evening. My name is Holly Anderson and I'm a board member with the Sagittarius Coastal Alliance. One thing that is somewhat frustrating with North Shore's developments is we only see bits and pieces and never the whole. And so I would encourage you before you agree to rezone this property, that you really take a look at what their needs are. It's, you know, one thing to take people's word for something, but once you rezone, it's kind of, you know, hard to pull that back. So really encourage you to ask them to show you the total. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Martha Sikora. I live through the four A with the site, right? I just got to the experience, I had a wonderful makeover of the site. It was awful. It was awful. Destroyed huge hundred-year-old trees. Destroyed swaths of native flora. They put in, they didn't ask any of us what we thought of it. They said that they would poll us to see whether or not they were going to agree to have this work done. And nobody that I know that lives there was polled. I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned because country doesn't seem to be just fringing about enforcing ordinances. It means you can tell me that water ski lake, which is just a mosquito pit. It's true. You know, it's true. It smells and it's the they replanted where the mold dust along the sides of the road, they planted it with what looks like some sort of mutant grass and then looks like nothing more than a tick habitat. I'm concerned about what's going to be done and I have concerns about I'm concerned about the people who agree, who want to do this project. There, I have concerns about the ethics. And that's why I'm saying.
Thank you. Or do we have anybody on Zoom who wants to speak regarding this rezoning request? If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand.
I can't, I can't find where to raise my hand, but I'm talking. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
All right. My name is Nick Wallace at thirty-five twenty-four dugout road. I will not read my letter again because you guys have it in writing. I just really want to emphasize, I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, the language in the, the tree ordinance about landmark trees. I, I'm not sure how that was allowed to take place. Some of these eastern white pines, as I said, I measured them, their height with my drone. The one was almost a hundred and thirty feet tall. I mean, like, they, they would have been on the register of Michigan's largest trees. They were definitely the largest eastern white pines I personally knew of in Elegant County. So this loss, it, it was just devastating. And I attempted to speak with Scott Boskrap about it last fall and was told that they were overgrown, which is a word that is not applicable or relevant within an ecological context. It truly doesn't make that much sense. So, you know, going forward with this rezoning, if, if you give an inch, it's, as, as Holly mentioned, it's hard to retract that in the future. So I'm, I'm just really concerned about the potential for further tree loss of the area. And putting our coastal corridor more at risk for erosion and just increased construction also increases the spread of invasive species. And when you turn native vegetation into lawn, it decreases the ability of the soil to uptake rainwater during high rainfall events. There's tons of problems with this. So I, I greatly ask of you all to take the tree ordinance very seriously and consider how many landmark trees do exist in this town and how we should be exploring new ways to keep our canopy intact. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anyone else want to speak? Please unmute yourself. Going once? Going twice?
Nope. Thank you very much. I will vote for the public hearing associated with this petition. So this time, the discussion we're on, when you condition, of course, if you ever use an additional question to Laney or an applicant, how, just how to do it or if you'd like to address something that was been said earlier in public, you're welcome to do that as well. So at this time, any thoughts or admission?
I guess my, my question would be, is there any way through photography to get a picture of what the property looked like when they purchased it? As to the amount of trees on the property? And how many have already been removed? Because I'm concerned when somebody says tree is overgrown. Heard that one. What do you mean by that tree? So I, I would be helpful, especially in light of the letter we got from Olson and Howard. Is there any way for the the township to go back and do a calculation of what was there? And then if we go ahead with this, what type of additional tree removal they would require to move forward? Because I'm, I'm concerned when I hear that we went in and because of safety, we removed all these trees. Well, we spent an awful lot of time putting this new set of ordinances together. And this applicant well knows we spent a lot of time on this and concerned about the number of trees that have been removed and how we, how they going forward, what we would even begin to require as far as replacement.
I believe we can look at aerial photography. I don't know the, you know, the exact dates of when aerial imaging was taken, but through Google Earth, we could get a picture of. Yeah, you can. Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to open an option. Thank you.
Hi. Are you going around the table or whatever we're doing? Is someone just missed out? So section three point two O, the zoning district intent, I mean, the recent part. The intent of this district is to preserve and protect the town to the end close approximately to or bordering the Calamuz River and to preserve the character of the riparian work. And there are a couple more differences between R one and R two that beyond what Laney indicated. Well, we know that in R two, multi-family homes are not allowed. And the billable setback from a higher of forty feet on R two versus twenty-five feet on R one. All the other differences Laney's already mentioned. And that's what I have to say.
Johnny?
Yeah, I guess, I, I think back when we were redoing the ordinances and we, we talked about this part pretty specifically. And there was discussion whether or not we'd keep it R two or not. And we sided on that we would keep it R two. And I, if I remember correctly, and I don't know if anybody else recalls, but a lot of it had to do with the fact that they would be unsettled. And so we wanted the larger lots to accommodate septic and, and I know that probably that R one lots would accommodate, but our intention was that they would have, that if they add septic, that we wanted the larger lots. And I don't see any of that has changed at this point. And I think that was part of the reason too, why if you look at, if you look at, I think it's labeled, you know, three point four. There is the ability to get to thirty thousand square foot lots in R two. You just have to have public water, which they have, and you have to have public sewer, which they don't have. So I don't know how feasible it is to have a public sewer there, but, but I just remember talking about it and the, the whole intention was that we would we wanted the larger lots there. And this is before North Shore owned property, if I remember right. It was, it was still Pine Trail Camp. And we were just thinking forward as to what we would like to see on that property. And part of it was a larger lots. And I don't see how our thinking would have changed in, of course, you know, a year and a half or whatever it is. At least mine hasn't. And they, you know, fair or not, they do have the ability to reduce it to the thirty thousand square foot lots that they extended in sanitary there. Maybe it's not realistic, like I said. But, but either way, I guess my, my thought is, is I, I continue to like to see the larger lots on that property. I, I guess part of me kind of reveres one of the speaker's comments on it sure would be nice to, you know, see a master plan of all the parcels for the North Shore development because, you know, coming in one by one by one, it's really difficult to I think, make a picture, you know, as far, I'm sure North Shore has, I'm sure Scott is, he's, you know, he's a smart man. He's, you know, he's like a developer that's been doing this for a long time. He's probably got a good vision in his head on, you know, and how this is all going to play out. And, and I, I just don't have that vision and, you know, to, to know what, what they're thinking and what, you know, what we're going to see on down the road. The, the condo for the, the existing units, I guess I saw that as I like the idea of preserving the existing homes. I know there's been a lot of talk about a lot of trees gone, which I don't know how many were removed or, or not, but, but I did like the idea of, you know, maintaining existing homes. It seemed less intrusive. And it seemed to make a lot of sense to me. But as far as the forty thousand square foot lots that we're talking about right now, I guess my thought is I, I'd like to stay with the existing zoning just based on, you know, what we talked about when we were developing the ordinances a year or two ago.
Mr. State of the Union, with Ben, anything?
I, I echo the sentiments about. I would appreciate the ability to see the master plan so that we can make informed decisions about cases of the master plan. I I think that a hundred, I'm using ballpark numbers here, thirty thousand square foot lots, a hundred and twenty-five feet wide. Those are fairly large lots. I don't see any issue with fitting homes and septics and yards and so forth into those lots. It's not, it doesn't appear to be a cramped arrangement, especially considering the change that's going to be made to the corner. I don't, I don't have concern about that. I think we would all benefit from seeing the master. I see this, you know, future development. I'm curious, what does that mean? Maybe Scott could help us envision that.
Well, like other parts, it's going to be seen, an alternate plan, but I believe that's sort of the one that's expected here and it looks like. I didn't know there was a history that you were talking about, so I'm really intrigued by that. It seems like we should bring ourselves a year later or something.
My comment was strictly is that I know that Scott mentioned that they don't, does not have waterfront property, but we have a lot of R two that, and parcels that don't have direct waterfront property on this township. So I'm not sure if I think that that is a reasonable reason why you go from R one to the R two. I do like the larger lots that are associated with the R two. And also it's like, it really does go against our land, the future land use map and, and that is what we typically, in what we use in order to help make our decisions. And it is going against our future land use map. So I'm not in favor at this point unless somebody's going to convince me differently to go from an R two to an R one. I, I just don't, I don't see that as, as bad.
And again, if, if they showed us R one, you know, larger lot in conjunction with the future development, the management decision.
Is that type of request necessary for a rezon?
No.
So the question really comes to is, is it appropriate to rezone this R one to R, R two to the R one?
And I ask, is it appropriate to deny it? One right across the road is R one.
Yeah, but it's also connected as, as you look at the zoning is all along the river is also R two and north of this R two. So even though it's across the road, also realizing that in every place throughout this township, you always have a one zone buttoning up against another zone. Is that still appropriate? And again, those are decisions we make. But again, if you look at our future land use map, there's a, a question as to whether it's really what we thinking of the future in that particular area.
It's not what we were discussing when we went through that painstaking process to come up with this. And it was a pain stick.
But now we have the benefit of doing it in the context we have, which, which when we're developing master plans, it's, it's hard to imagine specific contexts like this. We have a road. The side of that road is R one. I don't know if that's a problem or not. It's, it's R one. And on the other side of the road, in the context of that one road, it's, it's hard for me to justify saying it can't be R one in that, this, this specific piece of property.
In regards to also thinking, we've had this discussion a couple of times, is will this parcel going to be dual zoned? Again, I'm not sure. I might not understand that whole parcel that, you know, this, it's like, okay, there's part of this going to be R one and then part of it is R two. We've talked about that too, and saying larger parcel, or is there individual parcels that then?
Well, then, there's, there's a two-part, you know, they, they submitted the rezoning with their second condominium request, separate hearing items, separate considerations. You look at them with their own merits, right? With rezonings, you can't condition them. They're, it's a separate action. So presumably, if the rezoning went forward, there would be, there could be two things. So let's say the second condominium didn't proceed and the rezoning did. Then there would be a dual zoning on that parcel until they did a land division to, to follow the line of those five parcels. So then you would have the R two and the R one. If the site condo didn't move forward, there would have to be, like I said, a land division. This whole site is a This whole site is afforded a certain number of land divisions. So they would have to utilize what was available for them. I believe maybe they have four or five, perhaps, based on the acreage. So, yeah, so it would either be dual zone or they would, and or they would come in and do a land division and either make these four parcels or three or just one larger one, we don't know.
Is there a opportunity to address the comments or is it appropriate?
I believe it is.
All right. Well, I think, and I've kind of made some notes here, so there's, there's really no order to this. But let me see if I can address some of the concerns. So typically you come in and you develop a piece of property and you go in for a rezon. And then the planning commission is usually blind to what you plan to do on the property or what the layout may look like. Because that is not something that's a requirement for a rezoning. And so what we did is we scheduled them both for tonight so that you'd have an opportunity to actually see what we proposed and that you wouldn't be in the dark. And we didn't do land divisions and use our actual legal land divisions and splits and just simply, you know, split the property and record it and move forward because quite frankly, we wanted some input from the planning commission and from the public. And we wanted everybody to understand, you know, these are site condos, there's site condo documents that have requirements in them. The site condo requirements are the documents that are before you. The second part of this meeting requires that they're a single family home. So even though an R2 and an R1 are different, whether you're able to put a multifamily on them or not, in this particular case, and I believe that's one of the reasons Mr. Wearing across the road liked it, because he spent quite a bit of time reviewing the condo docs and realized we didn't have short-term rentals allowed and they were going to be single-family residence structures on these individual lots. So that is one item. Number two is tree removal. And we're not proposing any true removal on these five lots at all right now. And when we would, you know, figure out what we're going to build or whether we sell the lots and whether it's part of a architectural review for the, for the condo docs, they would have to come to Linay and they'd have a zoning approval process and a building permit process. And at that point, it would be appropriate for her to walk the site and determine what trees are on the property and whether there needs to be a permit or whether the, the structure that's proposed doesn't require any trees that are being removed. If anybody's driven the property, most of the trees are actually pretty close to dugout roads. So if you're creative and you can move the driveway around, maybe, and I'm assuming most of the trees stay. Number two, and I like Hailey's comment about the septic systems in the R2. And it made a lot of sense when R2 is on the water. You don't want septic systems if you don't have to near the water. But in this particular case, this R2 is across the road of dugout road. It is not on the water. And quite frankly, if you look at your map, you have no R2 other than the North Shore property that is zoned R2 that doesn't have waterfrontage. Your R2 to the south or down Kelmazoo River is only on the riverside of dugout road or Riverside Drive. And all of the property to the north is North Shore property that fronts the river. Your master plan, your master plan says it's going to be a green space preserve. Now that encompasses all of North Shore and all of the camp property. And as we all know, North Shore's property is zoned multiple districts. It's R3B, it's R2, it's R1, it's C1. And the camp is zoned presently R2. And I realize that that is a pipe dream that everybody may have had, that it was going to be preserved for a green space, but that is not reality. And the master plan is a guiding document, but it's not a controlling document. Future or our master plan, North Shore, North Shore presented to this township a master drawing of design and what it proposed to develop back in 2017 when it went for the approval before the planning commission for the marina. That plan really hasn't changed, other than the fact that the marina's been on hold for so long that we've had to continue to develop on the fringes, which is the commercial area, which was always to be developed, commercial. And really the only change that's happened so far is the Barnum Minium area, which is out on 135th. The camp property was simply a right to purchase that property that the previous owner to North Shore owned. And then North Shore bought it from the previous owner. So the camp property, we don't have a master plan. We don't know what we're going to do with the rest of the property. We know that we want to preserve the cottages on the river. And we know that the rug, the road dugout lends itself to at least five good lots for single-family homes that would be in the more affordable nature. And it's on a public water system. There is no public system there. You don't have the capacity for it and it would not be prudent to try to bring it there. I think that addresses all of the comments that I had heard, but I'm on kind of a spotty internet. So if I miss something, please ask me.
So at this point, I have to ask Commissioner Scherber. Insert any further discussion?
We do the, do we public hearing, do we post public hearing?
And this, this application is strictly for the rezoning plus R2 to R1. And that's a recommendation to the township.
Well, that's, that's recommended.
Thank you.
I guess strictly on the, like what I said before, just to be consistent on what we've talked about. You know, when we were developing the ordinances, I would move to deny the request for former Pine Trail Camp parcel 320, there's your report in the street, rezoning from R2 to R1.
I'll support, that's, that's, I recommend, recommendation.
Yes, recommendation.
Support, yeah, I'll support that.
So Mr. Hailey has recommended that to the town judge board that consideration for rezoning for R2, our site residential to R1 residential for approximately 4.323 acres, dugout road parcel 03201 Stewie, 004030 is denied. And then motion and supported by Mr. B. Any further discussion? Question, overall vote?
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Yes, you agree with that?
Yes, I, I, I support the motion to, to recommend it's denial.
Recommend?
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mrs. Phil, yes? Mr. McFadden, yes? And so is one?
Yes.
Good stand? No. And Webster?
Yes. The motion has been given a deny, there is a rezoning request. So that, can we move on to the next? I'm going to listen. Yeah, I, the next part of the agenda is to look at consideration of a site condominium, most five individual lots. 2505 dugout road, parcel 0320403, you know, the other applicant, your source score is a proper product, containing approximately 4.323 acres within the former Pine Trail, Pine Trail Camp. Ms. Sloney?
Okay. While this request is predicated on there being the five parcels and the recommendation was made to deny the rezoning. Now certainly the final decision is by our township board on that. So with this condominium request, there were a couple of dimensional issues that I brought up in our, in the memorandum. I know that Scott and his team have been working to update those, the plan, create some comments in the memo, but those came in at about 3:30 today and I did not have time to read those. So one is the dimension of that corner lot. The next issue would be the placement of the drainage facilities and the required setbacks. In terms of the other issues that I brought up earlier was that we would want to see that tree preservation. While this is less than, it's taken as a whole, this would be four acres, so it would be more than the three that is required for that tree preservation study and plan. So those were the main issues in my report. But again, given the, that this has a recommendation for denial, it's up to the planning commission, what further conversation you want to have on the, on the site condo.
I will vote to, to Scott. Did you wish to say anything?
Pardon me?
So, did you wish to say anything in regards to this particular application?
I would, I don't think it's actually prudent to move forward with it at this point. If you've denied the rezoning, all of the lots that are proposed obviously meet R1, they don't meet R2. So the drawing and everything here proposed would be mute. So I, I would think that we would just simply withdraw it. I just, I guess, talking to the planning commission, I just find it unfortunate because Linay, you know, points it out so clearly, we have legal lot splits. We just make them less than your acreage and we have no oversight. I mean, your tree ordinance doesn't apply to acreage of less than three acres. So if we create acres, you know, less than three acre lots, I just, I guess, a little frustrated, don't understand it. Obviously 30,000 square foot lots for a single-family home is a significant more green space than anything you voted on in the last couple of meetings. And it, in North Shore's opinion, was creating an affordable product. And for some reason it doesn't fly, just. Yeah, disappointed, I'll leave it at that, we'll withdraw the second part of the application.
Okay, so the, the applicant is chosen to withdraw, is that the question for the, is how, how she? Therefore, you know, like, yeah. We're going to be withdrawn, so we don't, we don't, we're out of time.
Yeah.
All right, you're all, then we are complete with, with this. We don't need any old business. No old business. Any communications, besides the correspondence we had, and those is applications, any individuals responsible?
It, it's still, I mean, like the bothers me, is this stuff that's coming up.
So we have deadline for the applicants to submit a month prior. What happens is that our packets are emailed out to the planning commission. They're emailed to our community list serve. And so when people see and review the packet, then they come up with responses. And so then those responses are sent after. The Scott Wearing gave email, I didn't take that to be official public comment.
Oh, that's fine, I'm really, it's six page also.
Yeah, that is why that happens at the, at the week before the packet. But after you pick up your packet, after the packet's been issued, after, you know, hours, those kinds of things.
So is the question, when it comes in, it's going to be, I believe that was, was that email? Did we also, we see that notice, Morgan, did we, was that sent out to us, or electronically?
So.
On that letter?
So. That one was hand delivered. Okay, so I just, for all those who didn't pick up their packet, I put in the packet.
Okay. So then that question is, do, is that considered? Because again, the lightness that it refers to us, that's what I found this topic about, should we even consider it?
No, I mean, there's no deadline for what the public comment can come in. You know, I wouldn't want to ever do that. In the future, we'll make sure that we email it out right away. You know, we'll, we'll do our best there. And I mean, I guess this is also for folks who are here from the coastal alliance. It is, I have the duties come in kind of late, late in the day, late in the week. We get that and feel free to send copies, you know, to others on that list.
So can I speak briefly to that point?
Sure.
So we emailed this to Linay and we copied Cindy as the clerk, Daniel as the manager, and that Kirsty was your attorney, all received soft copies. So I mean, we share the disappointment that you all received it.
Well, I don't think you spoke, you talked about the North Shore one, are you?
Is he open, will he open them up?
Okay, my, yeah, yeah.
So we had, we had anticipated that, that the email would have passed on, so. And part of the, anyway, we don't have some, we don't, we can't meet your deadlines because we have to read what you have.
Correct.
Or we respond, so.
To do our best that we can and sample, do the best they can to get it down before the, the meeting. I mean, why is it the best we can do?
Any other comments?
I know that we did, we did receive a site plan submitted for Blue Star Band for the October meeting. And that's all I have.
Any planning commission besides the, information on, if there's any other comments with the planning commission?
So are we going to be addressing the development near the park? Connects all that, city of Florida denied their request for waiver of the setback. So that's what they will bring to address the next meeting because we, we, you caught them taking action without permission. And since they made their initial presentation, they have been MIA. And I don't want to let that, that's what they will address in the next meeting.
Yes, I actually have an email from them, so it is going to come back to planning commission. Because the town, or because the city denied it, that, that renewed setback will not be available to them. So their choice is to update their plans, and I was in contact, contact with them about this, is to update their plans to show the setback as required and or not request the.
The only comment I have is that Jackie and I have been working on updating our bylaws. Once I review, Jackie gave me some additional ones, I will send them back to Linay. And Linay, I'm assuming it goes to, back to our lawyer?
Yeah, we can ask our lawyer to read those.
Yeah, so hopefully Novemberish will be the latest and an update of the bylaws. Any other commissioner comments?
The zoning board of appeals did overturn the planning commission's definition of office. And ruled that Blue Star Band is in office, you, that would be allowed in that zone district. And the primary reason for doing that is because there's some case law that says the text of the zoning ordinance trumps the intent sections. So what is, whatever it says in the zoning ordinance that you're permitted to do doesn't have to line up with what the intent section says. Maybe it's more generous than that, who will spell the intent.
And, you know, the one thing about regards to, in regards to C1 and C2 is, is there a need as, as they go forward housing that's coming forward in Blue Star, is that we really need to look at the differences. What makes C1 versus a C2? C one versus a C two and look at the charter? Maybe we need to be more explicit. So not just working on the intent. Yeah. So, uh.
So if maybe Cindy could possibly suggest some wording changes that would put us in a position that our ordinance are already going to be true against us. So if there's something that, some small thing we might have made, uh, we need to revisit that, let's do it. So we don't face this problem again.
I can work with Lanay on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know one of the discussion points we had was about how for retail, we have a square footage maximum. But we don't have that square footage maximum for office or uh, hotel motel for other uses. And so you know, if that is, you know, the intent for a, a footprint or a, a volume of a building that's smaller, then maybe we need to look at that for every use in that district.
Did I miss out on talking about how we write our ordinance? We did it so.
I think we missed. All right, was that a township board report?
Township board report, um, board met on last week Wednesday, the 10th. And other than typical board work, they did make some appointments to the fire board, the library board and the Kalamazoo Lake Harbor Authority. All three of them for three appointments. And I believe, I didn't write it down, but I believe the fire board was Eric Beckman. Beckman. And the library board was David Blatt. And the Kalamazoo Lake Harbor Authority was Dick Wass.
And Holly.
And Holly, and Holly.
How did the, um, they, they voted on the townhouse project too, right? The.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, that was right here. And they did approve that in the condensed PUD version.
Any, any other uh, project updates want in? Uh, see at Blue Star.
Blue Star, I believe that that is, is going to just expire. I don't believe that they're moving forward with that. Um, Auto Camp, I don't think they have a new name quite yet, but uh, they are moving forward. Um, they're going to be doing not the air streams, but more of um, I don't even know how I would explain that. Looks like almost like little modern sheds.
Showed.
Little ADU cabins. Yeah, little tiny cabins.
Uh, she should.
He should.
Yeah, or he should.
We should.
He should.
We should.
Um, so with that, will they need to come back because it was a conditional zoning or is it still? Is there something in their plan that is against the conditional zoning that we?
No, no, we're making sure that they stay in line with that. We did talk about if there are changes that depart from what was in the approval that, that wanting to come back. They are looking to have their main building, their community building a little larger than what was on the plans, but we allow in our minor amendment process to have flexibility in some of its square footage.
And then the whole hotel is coming down?
No, they haven't, they haven't, uh, I haven't seen anything to the contrary yet, but um, they're looking to do their first phase with these, um, we should be.
We should.
Yeah.
Or when, when will they do? How long did we extend their?
Yeah, so they have till um, February to pull permits. And um, well, they already pulled the demo permit for the interior of the motel, right? So that began.
Yeah, they explained that one to me.
So the, the outside structure, the envelope is staying the same, but they're going to demolish something inside?
I think it was some demo with the interior spaces of the rooms.
Okay.
Have there been any instructions on that?
I'm not sure. Can ask.
They asked.
They have done. It just doesn't look like they have. That's what I'm asking. I don't.
They look careful from the outside.
And then um, they are working and getting, you know, permits from the, the county for, you know, SESE, the, the soil erosion sedimentation control. They're, they're working on some of the land surveying and then we'll follow up with the building permitting. So they are in process. I get emails from them about these ways a week.
So therefore we're going to keep that on the, the agenda until, so we are fully aware of what's happening over there.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue to provide updates on that project for sure, especially when they have a new name.
Uh, how about best funds?
That's done. I mean, that expired. That's, yeah.
This expired and nothing. Yeah, that'd be one of the problems. Okay. With nothing else? I will open, um, this is the time that we have a second public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who's just to the very thing you mentioned in regards to uh, things that we stopped it off, please state your name and.
I'm still Holly Anderson. I live in the city of Saginaw, and I don't think Saginaw didn't do this. Two quick things. It sure would be great if your emails were on the website or at least maybe the planning chair because we would, we would have emailed that communication to all of you and we've been able to do that. And so just a thought. Um, the other thing for Mr. Stannis, if you, if you look at the map we provided, um, actually the land that they wanted to rezone is also across Conservation Eastside. So it's not um, it just, you know, looking at the map, I think might give us a slightly different, or at least it does for me. So um, thank you much. Appreciate you all.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to, in the audience? Uh, anybody on Zoom?
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute. Going once. Going twice.
So I will then close our second public comment. And I will intervene in, uh, more features.
So, sorry.
Mr. Butler, all of you say hi.
Hi.
Both? Again, we're.